It's okay to sit somebody after the roll call.
Yeah, he's a regular member, so you can just come through.
No problem.
I guess it takes longer to walk over here than that of my bike.
Yeah, sorry. Seven oh four, okay. We read the roll call, so just introduce yourself.
Nick Metapace.
Okay, so we have five people, we have enough for a quorum. Just a reminder, even though there are a few people in the audience, I was notified that some people watching the, watching the planning commission meeting, you know, via YouTube or whatever, couldn't really hear. And there was, there's few people here, you know, it's easy to just talk amongst ourselves because of nobody in the audience, but just, just a reminder. Next is, call for additions to the agenda? No? Anybody else? Okay, next is call for public delegations. Public delegations to the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, items, referrals, or applications subject to a decision by the commission. A public hearing or litigation may not be discussed. During delegations, the members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comment. Don't see anybody? Next items are the reports, any communications? Does anybody attend the zoning meeting since the last meeting?
I think they've...
Nope. Okay, next is a report from the ex-officio, Don McKenzie from the Board of Selectment Office. Do you have any, anything to add?
All I think, all I knew that the budget's finally winding down. I went to my first town hall meeting last night, which was very important, well-run. We had heard from our first selectman, head of finance, and listened to the public talk about some of their problems with the budget or paths on the back. They did a good job with the budget, I think, before they had it. Remember, before, it was a really good meeting, I think, and I should go pretty well attended too. So, that's about it for now. We're going to start with the ones that do stuff now that we have the budget behind us.
Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And a report from Planning Director Gary Gaisel.
I don't have a whole lot to report. There are several projects in the works. My team has been getting down to the subdivision executive.
We'll talk about that a little later. I don't think there's anything, the subcommittees, chairman report, I just, this reminder, I guess, when we go as a liaison to meetings, if we're, if we're in the audience, unless, you know, you're not, unless you're coming as a, you know, public speaker, if you're working as a liaison, not to make comments unless, unless requested by somebody on the, on the commission. I, I made the mistake of letting somebody speak last time, even though she wasn't really speaking as part of the zoning commission, but she got a little confused when she was speaking. I talked to her afterwards, she was mostly, she speaks a lot at our meetings, so just a reminder, if you're attending as a liaison, not really supposed to comment. The next thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes, the meeting, minutes of April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting. Do I have a motion? Or any comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I wasn't there, so.
You're standing there. Okay, so it's four zero one.
I wasn't there, so.
We don't have any public hearings, we don't have any subdivision or re-subdivision applications. The next item on the agenda is the zoning referral. Application by William R. Sweeney Esquire, a proposed text amendment to amend the permitted use, uses on section eleven point one point four, warehouse and wholesale storage of the East Line zoning regulations. Yeah. Yes, Gary, can you comment on that, or?
All right, so for you is a proposal to add to section eleven point one point four, which is under permitted uses in the light industrial zone, warehouse and wholesale storage, self-storage warehouses. And the applicant here wants to add, including accessory outdoor storage of motor vehicles, boats, trailers, and recreational trailers, provided that such outdoor storage is fully screened from view by a building, fence, wall, shrubbery, or embankment not less than six feet in height. So your charge would be to review that and against our plan of conservation and development and determine its consistency therewith. I think in terms of allowing additional outdoor storage of boats, vehicles, and so forth, obviously needing to be screened, I can certainly appreciate that. I certainly think it expands the use and what's allowed within the LI district, and thus feel that it supports economic development in that regard, and I think that would be consistent with our plan. Certainly, the outdoor storage of motor vehicles, boats, and trailers, and engines, and things like that, I would certainly caution the zoning commission to ensure that it's on appropriate surfaces and that they make accommodations for that type of material, if it's even an issue. So, that would be their purview. But I think in terms of the use and expansion of it, allowing more, it's certainly consistent with the plan of development.
We didn't, I was the only, we didn't, there wasn't anything in the document, in the...
Certainly read what was provided, I believe you have that as well, from Dennis and Capital Partners LLC, the proposed zoning regulation text amendment. The purpose was that the applicant, Dennis and Capital Partners LLC, desires to develop a self-storage warehouse with outdoor vehicle storage at twenty-two Liberty Way, East Line, Connecticut. The proposed zoning regulation text amendment would permit screened outdoor vehicle storage as accessory to the self-storage warehouses in the LI district. Within the self-storage industry, there exists significant demand for outdoor storage of motor vehicles, boats, trailers, and recreational trailers. Many regional self-storage facilities currently offer this service. Most importantly, providing storage areas for these types of vehicles in industrial zones encourages and provides opportunities for such a storage outside of residential neighborhoods, where this storage can be unsightly and adverse to adjacent unscreened properties.
Was this industrial, this zone?
Yeah, this is a light industrial LI.
It's LI, yeah, so it's fine.
That was my initial reaction to it, that it's consistent use with a light industrial use.
I think it's discussed in chapter eight of the P O C D in general. And there's another chapter deals with economic developments on the P O C D. Does anybody else have any comments? I know we didn't really have a chance to review it.
I know, I reviewed online, but I guess I didn't really understand.
That's the subdivision.
That's where I'm, I guess that's where it is, is the...
This is for, this is for a request by a zoning commission for a text amendment. You know, I forced a comment on a text amendment that they, they'll review just to see if it's, we just make a determination whether it's consistent with the P O C D. Right, we don't make a determination, we don't make a determination whether, you know, the text amendment goes through or not.
Do we have to decide this tonight?
I don't believe we're gonna meet, they're scheduled for a public hearing on June sixth. Again, I don't know if that public hearing will remain open, or not. We meet again, I believe, on the eleventh.
So, what's the criteria for them getting us information to review?
They, as soon as they were seen it, they referred it over to us. We, just to make, just double check the statutes. We had thirty-five days prior to the public hearing.
I'm just, do we get this at the previous meeting, about this information, about this? Because I mean, it's not in the materials online. I, I haven't...
No, just...
I guess I...
Gary, it was just sent, it was just sent to you the last couple weeks.
I just received it.
It wasn't, wasn't, wasn't part of the last meeting at all?
You noticed it was April thirty in twenty twenty.
Right. We had another text, we had another text amendment we were reviewing at the last meeting, this is separate.
So, if we don't decide tonight, no decision is a positive decision?
Correct. Certainly, if you wanted to, we'd have a little special meeting to discuss it.
Oh, just...
If you don't mind, could you read the text of the proposed amendment one more time? Thank you.
All right, the proposed zoning regulation text amendment reads as follows. It's section eleven point one, permitted uses, the following uses of buildings and/or land and no others are permitted, subject to site plan approval in accordance with section twenty-four. Section eleven point one point four permits warehouse and wholesale storage, self-storage warehouses. And the new text would be after the word warehouses, will begin with, including accessory outdoor storage of motor vehicles, comma, boats, comma, trailers, comma, and recreational trailers, provided that such outdoor storage is fully screened from view by a building, comma, fence, comma, wall, comma, shrubbery, comma, or embankment not less than six feet in height, period.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's industrial, so the boots, they want to put their outdoor stuff outside and fence it off. It's light industrial, so they, if they're blocking it out, don't make a difference, so. It's not residential, or things, so.
I think, I think the, would it require, like, because when you, it suggested, like, recommending that the zoning commission take into account, like, slopes and stuff, and like, the angle at which the vehicles are parked, would that, would we propose that they add that to the amendment itself?
You could certainly note that they should be aware of the existing potter here, proposed rating. I would note that the proposed language says that such outdoor storage is fully screened from view. So, regardless of what the potter is, you have to ensure that it's completely screened from view. I think it does kind of apparently take that into account.
Okay.
Is there any, is there any protection against, you know, you store a bunch of vehicles, or my concern is that it turns into a junkyard, and your cars are leaking oil, and antifreeze, and is there any protections against, you know, the environment by allowing this?
I believe you may need some state or maybe oversight for a dealer, or a dealer and repairer. Obviously, you require a D M V oversight there. In terms of just storing motor vehicles, I have a feeling this is, in particular, this community, coast or boats, in particular, trailers, I'd be concerned that they're unregistered. So, to prevent the junkyard, wire, three unregistered vehicles on your property, so that effect. But beyond that, it gets to a point where you have some inventory of unregistered, like, money in the junkyard. So, these, I believe, would be storage, I don't know if it's, own boats, I think the trailers would have them, who'd be registered. If they're motor vehicles and haven't been sold, I'm not sure how that's handled, but I have to, I talked to the store owner about the storage, about the ton of storage of that. Again, I think that's regulated by D M V. Certainly, the safety mechanism there is to reduce on the enforcement. And displayed, that's what I'll play off of, so.
So we can say it's consistent in terms of economic use, but we can usually, with caveat, as long as, as environmental or safety concerns are addressed, I mean, you know?
Yeah, I...
I mean, if that's something the zoning commission would have to make a determination on, I guess.
Yeah, I would certainly add to recommend that they ensure that the environmental components to this are addressed, that they have appropriate, like I said, surfaces for any outside storage, they have some trash, chemicals, oils, that, that they're exactly storing that material. Here, the motor boats, trailers, I don't want to say this, super hazardous, must are leaky. I suspect self-storage. Yes, the vehicles I would suspect could be, they could be used. I can't keep them on my property, right?
Right.
Coffee on it, like, from here, and so on. Again, zoning wants to police that, figure that out. Again, we certainly plan out any possible risks.
Right. Right. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns?
Does that, it did... I understand it's industrial. I just have, I just have concerns, you know, I understand any fence around it, but still, it's it's got the potential to introduce, you know, big lots of, full of junk that will be unsightly and...
Right, right.
The upside is that we're allowing some economic development for this type of storage.
Right.
So, could, would we be able to recommend that, like, they consistent with it being consistent economically, but not necessarily with the environmental intent of the P O C D? Could we recommend that they, like, kind of change the wording in the proposed bylaws to make, to limit it to only put areas outside of the inland, or the upland review area? That way, it's, that way, people still have to apply for a permit if it's something that is within three hundred feet of a water course?
Most, they would still have to commit for a site plan, you, they would then three hundred feet of water, so. That is the same as now, regardless of the use.
Okay.
This is just saying that, versus having to go through a special permit process, and making this a special permit use, like, this is going to be a permitted use by right. So, in addition to a warehouse, a sub-division, a self-storage warehouse, they want this outside component included with it, and the permitted use by right, right, you just get site plan approval. You will have to go to weapons with that, and laws zoning, but they don't have to hold a public hearing. Where it's a special permit, special use, they have to hold a public hearing, that zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, we're mostly just, just trying to make a determination whether it's consistent with the P O C D, that's basically our purview here, you know, but...
So ideally, you'd like to get the information and have a chance to go through the P O C D thoroughly, and we're not really being allowed to do that.
Yeah.
But I understand that the clock doesn't allow us. Guess this happens now and then, right?
Right, it's, it's basics.
Which is about any referral, you're gonna get a thirty-five day before the public hearing, and based on our meeting schedule, we're gonna be, at least this year, when we, after their first meeting. They have to hold a public hearing, and it's sixty-five days, and the stadium application.
Right.
That's not the same, wouldn't necessarily be, but I have the guarantee that it's...
I have a question, is there a reason we didn't receive this in our materials? It wasn't online, it wasn't in the emails, this is an oversight, or is it?
Yeah, because I just got the jet out yesterday.
I mean, we, because we received, you said you received this two weeks ago, right?
April thirty, the day of the letter, I don't actually, I don't know, desk, exactly, but yeah, you would have received it two weeks ago, but it went out with the jet out, which went out yesterday.
Yeah. Okay. So if you don't do a motion, it's just, you know, if those take action, we won't, we won't be able to give any feedback, I guess, at this point, because they, they have until, unless they have a special meeting, which...
Well, if they continue their public hearing, I'm sure, plus, planning should both hold a special meeting.
Right.
Which would be my suggestion, if you want to go back and read the P O C D and come back to the comments.
I guess the decision is whether to make a motion to say is whether it's consistent, or have a motion to postpone a decision, I guess, to...
Table discussion.
Table discussion.
Go to consensus as to what you're gonna hold that discussion, bring it back up. Because if you do it at the next meeting, which is fine, you just have to hope that they continue their public hearing. So, I'll probably look at the calendar.
Right, so is it...
So, my own professional opinion is that's pretty straightforward in terms of use, and just expanding the use, as far as the criteria, environmental aspects, all of that, that we call under section twenty-four of the zoning regulations. And they would have to ensure that we already require is adhered to with this new use. And that is, you know, and that's consistent with eleven point one, which is no others are permitted, subject to site plan approval in accordance with session, so.
Okay. So, does anybody want to make a motion, or did you want to? Does anyone feel comfortable making a motion, or?
I, I don't feel comfortable making a decision on this right now, and I know it's annoying, because I know, I hate having a special meeting to come in here and discuss it for ten minutes, but I, I, without having seen it before, until right now, I'm not very comfortable making a decision.
I think we might be helpful, as well, I'll also let you know, create, I'll advise you, additional uses that are prohibited by right, trucking terminals, printing or publishing, warehouse, wholesale, commercial nurseries, greenhouses, garden centers, office complex, dog grooming, all related accessory uses, customarily against an essential to the above prohibited uses.
Is it all pet grooming, or only dogs?
Says dog grooming. Light industrial manufacturing rooms, which are not dangerous by reason of fire, or explosion, or dangerous, or detrimental to the neighborhood by reason of dust, odor, use, waste, smoke, layer, noise, vibration, or other notches, or objection, or feature, as measured at the nearest property. And then, special uses are daily, coffee shop and cafeteria, private training facilities, trade and technical schools, and facilities of higher learning, without a residential component, research, design, development facilities, health spas, and gymnasiums, sports facilities, and other commercial indoor recreations, without a residential component, hotels, contractor or trade service facilities, motor vehicle and heavy equipment repair station, office and retail sales and industrial services, manufactured products, and other processed items that are produced to lie at onsite where such retail services are accessory use, and take place in the same structure, adult use establishments, subject to the following conditions, that's pretty much it, I'm gonna read them all. Group of dog daycare and training center, cannabis establishment, so, that and, like, special uses. So, they're pretty varied. And I think, you know, that's just so you can have some context, and just to compare outside storage of motor vehicles, boats, and recreational, too. Certainly, don't think that's as intensive as a truck internal, which they prohibited by. So, that's just, I think, in terms of looking at the consistency, in terms of economic development, yes, it's consistent. In terms of environmental issues and concerns, there's, you know, you may want to just caution any site plan approvals, obviously, because you want to ensure that those issues, if any, are addressed. I don't know that the use is necessarily inconsistent, that it's not being proposed in a residential zone, or even commercial, or a C V zone. I think, if they propose in, say, a commercial green zone, that's not, you have to, that need to closer. But again, boats, that would be consistent with commercial green.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be hesitant to have another meeting because, you know, you know, being, you know, respectful of people's time, since we're not making the final decision, it was a subdivision regulation, subdivision application, and we had a time period that we had to put it in, you know, we had to make a decision, and that's another story. But we're basically just commenting, and zoning, the zoning commission's making the final decision. We can do a motion to say whether it's consistent or not, and we can, we can, we can put conditions in the, you know, conditions and caveats, or whatever, to the, to the motion, I would think.
I wouldn't necessarily think of the caveat or conditions, because that's recommendations.
Recommendations.
Because there's no actual conditioning, anything, that's what I'd consider.
Right, right, recommendations, yeah.
That's, yeah, that's my suggestion, is to try and make a line, if you can, if you're not, you know, necessarily wanting to hold a special meeting. Then again, you know, members are, so you can move forward, and then you can have a motion at best. That's okay, give it a...
Does anyone want to make a motion, either from table, or make a motion?
I guess, I mean, we can end up, like, making a recommendation, I just don't know if our first discussion is, it is right, I mean, like I said, I don't love having a thing that I didn't know about, I understand that that happens sometimes. I would have liked a lot more time to, not a lot, more time to review this, but it does seem like, there's a lot of, I didn't make the P O C D, it wasn't part of it, but there's a lot of leeway in what you're able to do on here, it doesn't really seem like, we'd be, even if we come back and we say, we absolutely don't want this thing here, I mean, it seems as though it's allowed within the permitted use.
Yeah, it's like, it's like commercial, so it's...
I'm sorry, I just got, I didn't, I can't hear very well.
That's right, yeah, it's like commercial, so you, they're just expanding it a little bit, and they're gonna store outside, so. I mean, it's just zone for that, so.
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, the only, if the only question is, does this technically fit within, then it seems like, yeah, it fits. It's a slight variation we're seeing here, right, like, it's...
Well, you could say that outdoor stored trailers are accessory to retail sales of boats, so, if that's the case, they're not screened by, then it's the case they're not screened. I think that's, that's the context I'm using, for boat storage in districts outside of the...
Okay, so these, these boats are, well, I suppose it doesn't matter, but...
Industrial, again, the zoning map to your left, you can see that light industrial zones are in orange areas. So, it's not as significant on land area in town, because it makes a small percentage. It makes up part of that, by up to eight percent of commercial land that the town is less of, so it's even smaller than that, I mean, so... It makes up part of that by up to eight percent of commercial land that the town has less of, so it's even smaller than that, I mean, it's presented at five feet.
So the, the individual who's pursuing this, is he not allowed under the existing zoning rules to do this?
I believe that the interpretation by Bill was that it was not permitted use. Warehouse, warehouse is, however, outside storage is not.
Did they say?
Build a building, put all the boats and all the trailers inside.
Yeah. Did they say why it wasn't permitted? Was there a basis?
Talk directly to Bill, he'll have, there's reasons why, has he ever considered it prior, uh, maybe because it wasn't commercial marine use, desire to keep it in the commercial marine district only, possibly, I don't know, I would have to ask him, does he need to screen? That would be the only reason I would think they ever addressed it. But boats, besides that, and there are other trailers that can be stored out.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so. Especially if you're in the market, you know, selling. And a lot of space for, you know.
Okay.
Eighteen feet long, plus your line is ready to bend and reach when you would, so then, it's a commercial space, so, so you can have that.
Okay. Rich, do we wanna move, like, is, I just, as I said, I know I pushed, but it just, it does seem with, with what we're at here, that we're gonna have a special, we'd have a, if we didn't do it, if we table it, we're gonna have a special meeting to come in here and agree that, it does fit within the P O C D. I don't know if, like, it's necessarily desirable to the neighbors, but it, you know, it, that's not really.
It's really zoning's jurisdiction, I guess, basically, just.
If, so if we're not, if we're, I mean, at the very least reluctant to call a special meeting, and we're not, like, if we're not a hundred percent sure that it is compliant with the P O C D, we could just move to find that it's inconsistent with the P O C D, simply because, like, I mean, either A, uh, we haven't had enough time to deliberate, or B, just for the environment, the potential environmental issues. As opposed to finding it consistent with the P O C D, when we haven't been able to look over whether or not it's consistent with it.
I'm just concerned that, you know, some houses in the, maybe nearby, could possibly be, see this, all I can think of is that car junkyard over in Waterford on Boss Post Road that was, um, it's gone now, it's over by that ice cream place, you know what I'm talking about?
Calix?
Yeah, it used to be a, well, it used to be an absolute eyesore.
Yeah, that was a while.
Yeah.
It was a while back, yeah, it's a while back.
I mean, are we inviting something like that?
No.
I mean, I don't, we, we have some of these boats that have been sitting out here quite a while, but they're already in paid storage.
Yeah, we'd hope zoning would, so zoning would review any safety or environmental concerns, and.
Yeah.
If it's within the jurisdiction of wetlands, that they would, you know, they would take action, so. Um, any more discussion, or any?
Do we move to a vote then, or is?
Uh, does anybody wanna make a motion, or?
Alright, I guess, our motion that we moved to vote on this, or is it, if it's, we moved to motion to, if, see if this is a, sorry, words are hard right now, um, if this is comply, in compliance with the P O C D.
Right, I basically motion whether it's consistent, or it consists, or we can.
Consistent with the P O.
Consistent with caveats, whatever.
Yeah. Do we need to add, do we feel we need to add a caveat to that, or?
We can do that, yeah, I think it's, might be a good idea.
Alright. Do we just go?
Anybody wanna make a motion, or I can make a motion if.
Sure, Rich, but.
Okay, um, make a motion that the application, the proposed text amendment to admit the permitted uses section eleven one four warehouse and more wholesale storage of Eastline zoning regulations is consistent with the, with the P O C D in terms of economic development, as long as concern, as long as issues involving the environment or safety are addressed. Do you have a second, or? It's a motion, a motion.
Second motion.
The second, I mean, Tom, any other discussion, or any other?
I second the motion, sorry.
Tom, second, I'm sorry. Uh, any other comments, any other comments?
I mean, I just, like, it's easily the same thing, it's that I know this one, I don't love having it happen this quick, but I am probably the, I, I, I don't have nearly as much experience as three of the other members on this board, when it comes to the aspects of making the P O C D, considering that you three did, so I, right, that, and if we're ever saying that this is, this does seem like, if we're gonna allow a truck terminal, then it's like, gosh, you know, I have a hard time being able to say that, oh, we can't put boat storage there. Especially if it's not up to us to determine if whether or not it's environmentally, you know, consistent.
Any, any other, any other comments, discussion?
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Yeah, all opposed?
Abstaining.
Any, one abstain, one abstention, so it's four zero one.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is municipal referrals, we don't have any, um, no, no old business, uh, next item is the new business, subdivision regulations, section four, application submission procedure. Um, we're going to discuss amendments to this, to that section, we made a determination last month on the archaeological issue, uh, to send it to a public hearing, make a decision, um, now we have, uh, the other decision was on the, um, conservation of natural resources, uh, time period that they can respond, um, Gary?
We didn't, we didn't make a decision at the last meeting.
So, just a couple of things, the section there that I have before you, there's a memorandum that kinda highlights the, the history here, um, we didn't specify, uh, the timeline, uh, similar to the referral we just had, how much time do we have, if we're going to refer this document to another border agency, um, in order for them to review it and report back, what would be appropriate? Uh, so, the first thing is, is section, I believe it's four dash four. It's misnumbered on the one you have there, that's what I, hang on a second, we pulled up general procedures. Four, it should be four dash fourteen. Section four dash fourteen dash one, I believe it's misnumbered on your, your document, which I don't have up there. Um, so I was looking to make a few changes to the review and evaluation, section four dash fourteen one, with some minor language changes there, um, but after sitting down with the, our town attorney, Mark Zamarka, um, he did have a few comments, uh, the definition of a significant effect, um, was, who makes that determination, and what is it? It's a little subjective, as it's written, uh, an environmental impact assessment, uh, he was okay with, as far as what was being requested, um, but after some discussion, he's going to come back and give us some comment on this, as far as where it may be more appropriately located. After discussion, it, we were thinking it just might be an extension to, uh, section four dash two, dash three, design reports, and there are a number of them, uh, and that we would just include it in there. So I think we should probably wait to hear from him, um, and as, there's no major rush to get this done, but certainly we wanna continue to make progress on it, because we do see that there is a deficiency in it. So ideally, if we can get that done before the next application, so we don't have to, to deal with the headache there, that would be ideal. So after talking with Mark, he'll certainly have something before our next meeting, um, and we can share, and we can move forward from there, but in the meantime, obviously, I suggest taking a look at this, making any changes, additions, or writing down any questions or comments, uh, feel free to forward them, I can get them to Mark, and, uh, we can review it from there. In regards to the archaeological, uh, study aspects, I'll have to come up with, uh, some, I guess, there's really no language there, it's just coming up with that you wanted to delete the whole section. So that, certainly, I can do that, I can make the change, and we can go forward and hold a public hearing on that change, uh, I will have to send referrals out to the abutting municipalities, because it does affect land within five hundred feet of the town boundary, um, and we'll go through the process that way, um, if that's something that you're certain you wanna do. So I don't have that before you now, but I can prepare that, so we can have a public hearing on, uh, our next meeting, which is June eleventh, to make that change. Unless you'd like to do it together, and have one public hearing, to make the changes to the archaeological section, and this section that's before you now.
Would we be holding a separate meeting, or would it just be like the July meeting, or something?
Ideally, if we could get the, if we could get section four dash fourteen, uh, corrected, theoretically, we could time it all, so it all have a public hearing in July, and we amend both sections, and we're advertising once in the paper for a public hearing versus twice.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, ideally, I'm sorry, ideally, it should be at the same meeting, I would think.
Certainly, yeah, cha, it's, it's one public hearing to make the changes, and I think it's the most efficient use of our time. So if we wanna plan on a public hearing in July, and we'll have this kinda ironed out by June, we can.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to speak, I've never been on this end of a public, of a public hearing, so I wanna, does that work for everybody, like, I mean, if, I'd ideally like it, that it's, you know, something that we can all try and do at once, but.
Yeah, I, I think we can, um, because, you know, deleting a section is pretty straightforward, again, what we'll hear from the public, I don't know, um, will they sway you to not delete it, I don't, you know, probably not, but, um, we, you know, these changes with section fourteen, it's, they're, they're pretty minor, um, in the sense that we just wanna really specify a timeline.
Right.
Uh, at the same time, I did have a conversation with him, uh, and, and expressed that there's a, a number of the reports that are already required, basically, it's all the same information that you would be provided with, uh, in an environmental impact assessment or environmental impact statement. So what I thought might be more helpful is to go back and, and we take a look at what NEPA, under the federal government, requires for environmental impact statements, and kinda compare that to our existing regulations, and, and then we can see where maybe we are deficient or not. And so that, that's, that's my homework between now and our next meeting.
Right. The last, I'm sorry, the last meeting, we did, uh, agree to move forward for a public hearing on the archaeological, elimination of the archaeological section prior to the application, but we, in terms of the, uh, section four fourteen, thirty-three, the amendments, we decided we need more clarification from you, and then also with.
Yeah, I think we definitely.
Discussion with the attorney, I think was a good idea.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
In your summary there, uh, that first paragraph, the, the last sentence, it says, you know, we're gonna re, eliminate requirement for an environmental review team report, and replace it with a requirement that the applicant submit an environmental impact assessment, for review by the Eastline Commission for Conservation of Natural Resources, and the Planning Commission, before we make a decision. Um, so I'm just going now to the back page, I'm trying to make sense of these new, this new language, what, that you're proposing, and, uh, so fourteen four states, the Eastline Planning Commission shall refer the E I A to the Commission for Conservation of Natural Resources for our report. So we're asking them to prepare a report, and that report will, shall have the findings of the commission, statement of their vote, and any recommendations, uh, and, so, at what point do we, do we look at that report after it's done, and?
That, that was the, the intent here, is that you're gonna get that before you render a decision, so they'll have thirty-five days to review the E I A, and report back to the planning commission with their findings, and then you would take that information, enter it into the record.
Okay.
As part of your public hearing.
It just doesn't, you know, say that here, I guess, that's, the only thing that confused me.
Okay.
Do we need to put that in there, or no?
Um, I, I would say, if, if we could work on clarifying that, uh, but that is nearly forbidden from state statute, as it refers to referrals to this commission. Nearly forbidden, so we changed Natural Resources Commission, so it's interesting that, but, that's our state statutes.
Does anybody else have any opinion on that, or?
Uh, do we need to take any action to schedule the public hearing, or no?
So you can typically direct staff to schedule that, uh, if you have, and you know the, specifically the date, and you notify the public now, you would wanna hold that public hearing on that date, most likely, uh, but it could be canceled, so I always recommend just direct staff to hold a public hearing at the next regular meeting, or if it's gonna be two meetings out, just let me know.
I assume we'll just, we're just gonna wait to see if this text is further updated, because that's, you said, is counsel's advice changes?
Counsel had a number of questions with it, and suggested that we should, and, and they could just send me back some correspondence on it, so, um, we'll receive that at our next meeting, but we can, we can modify it and have it ready for our June, June meeting, and then maybe at the June meeting, decide that July is, otherwise, we can just plan to go forward with the, eliminating the archaeological review. In July, anyway, that would at least give us the opportunity to get this on the same agenda.
Okay. Do you think we do that now, or can we just wait till next month, I don't know if that's gonna be?
Make a motion to table the determination, uh, until we, you know, refer that from the attorney, or?
Yeah, I don't think you need a motion, you just table the discussion.
Okay. I think that's about it, I was.
I, I actually did notice one thing on the minutes from last month, and I apologize for not seeing this earlier, but it notices me as the person who made the motion to adjourn, which, as the, the minutes do note, I wasn't there.
Oh, wow.
So that's a very small change, it just says Menapease Collins to adjourn at seven twenty-three, and obviously, I wasn't there, I, I, I'm sorry that I missed that, um, but I just.
I didn't notice that either.
Do we need to redo that, because there is, I mean, obviously, it wasn't me, I was watching, but, you know, I, I didn't get to.
No, no, no.
Um.
Yeah.
Okay, do we know who it was actually who made the motion? We'd have to just look. I mean, I can't imagine why anyone would remember who made the motion a month ago to adjourn, but.
I assume Cindy made the, the motion the second, but.
Yeah. I appreciate that I was apparently here in spirit within the minutes.
Ryan, do you think you made the motion, or?
I can't, I mean, I assume, I think, I think it, that's probably just the same from the last time, yeah. Yeah. I know, it's a pretty long meeting, I don't know if you'll have the time.
You don't need to make a motion to amend the minutes.
No, we'll just, we'll wait till the next meeting. Am I allowed to look it up right now?
You don't need to. We don't mean to amend the approval of the minutes for this meeting. We'll do it at the next meeting, I guess.
I think, I think it was ten, but I don't remember.
Probably not, but. Right, that's. I should know that, I do enough minutes for other organizations.
Here, if you want, I can very quickly check who did it on our YouTube thing, but.
That's nothing, nothing urgent.
Okay. I will say, it is. I will say, it is, Tim is sitting where I normally sit, so there it goes, but, uh, all right, let's go, it's still...
Um, nothing else, um, I guess we can take a motion to adjourn?
Second amendment motion.
Oh, oh, first, oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I guess I made the motion.
You made it second, you seconded it?
I seconded it.
I guess, I'll say I made the motion.
Okay.